Good evening. I'd like to call the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the University Heights City Council order. This is Thomas.
Here. This is my phone here. This is why I'm here. Mr. Rock. This is your phone.
Eric.
That you can.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Rock? Someone. In motion by Mr. King, second by Mrs. Weiss, Mrs. Thomas, we call the vote.
This is that. Hi. This is my phone. Hi. This is why. Hi. This is me.
Hi.
This is me.
Hi. Thank you. Please join me in deciding and pledging allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is the reading and disposal of the journal. It's a set of minutes from June five. Oh, it's still working on. Okay, is there a motion table? The minutes from June five, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, oh.
Motion by Mrs. Sax, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Second by Mr. King. Mrs. Thomas, we call the vote.
Hi. This is my phone. Hi. This is why. Hi. This is me.
Hi. Hi. Very, very good. Thank you. Motion carries. Next is additions and removals from the agenda referrals to committee. Are there any additions or additions from the agenda or referrals to committee? Seeing none, we will now take comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to up to five minutes. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You may take up to five minutes to address the city. I saw Mr. Wordon raise his hand on the floor.
Hello, my name is Steve Warthein. I have lived at four, three, five, five, Bayfield Road for thirty-six years. I've lived in the Heights most of my life. I've served on both the school board and the library board. I'm here today as the chair of the charter review committee. I want to thank the council and the mayor for this opportunity. It was an honor serving with the ten commission members appointed by you. We may be a small town, but we have a deep talent pool in our community. Amendments in front of you represent the ten amendments in front of you represent about eleven months of serious work by the commission. Heavenly research, reviewed, debated, and perspect for each other's opinion. Commission was well aware that this is only the third time since nineteen forty-one that the charter was reviewed. We took our job seriously, eating twice a week. If there's a common theme that runs through this document, I won't hold it up because it's too heavy, then it is that we wanted to see community where the government is accessible, transparent, and open to more citizen employee participate participation regardless of class, group, or ethnicity. Today, I'm here to ask you to vote yea on all ten amendments, all of which commission vote, all of which were passed by the commission by large majorities. For instance, gender neutrality throughout the charter passed with seventy-eight and one extension. Ending term limits passed ten to nothing. Changing the law director to a mayor hire and a council approval or rejection passed nine, nothing. A review of the charter by the CRC by the Charter Review Commission every ten years passed nine, nothing. Updating the changes in the city's department passed with seventy-eight and three extension. Rank choice voting passed nine to two. It should be noted, well, they're going to tell you anyhow. It should be noted that since council last met, the Ohio League of Women Voters have endorsed rank choice voting. And ranked choice voting exists in cities as large as Minneapolis and as small as Middlebury, Vermont, a town of nine thousand one hundred. Recall elections. The changes such that the recall or removal of an elected office or an elected official results in the vacancy passed ten to nothing. Updating our initiative referendum process such that signatures required on a petition will be based on the percentage ballot of ballots cast in the last regular municipal election passed ten to nothing. Having a vice mayor preside over a council passed with eight yays and one abstention. Finally, our non-discrimination amendment passed eight to nothing. We have a chance to make history tonight. The amendments passed by the Charter Review Commission were not just for today. We were looking into the future and we see a dynamic diverse community with increased citizen ownership and participation in their government and city. Again, I trust the persons who serve on the CRC and I believe in the ability of our voters to both understand and support these amendments. I again ask that you let the voters decide on the ten proposed amendments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city? I see Mr. Meyer, Archie Boden.
Good evening. Good evening. Chris Meyer, three, five, five, six, five, one, one. Before you're arrested, I'd say to the university. Also served as vice chair of the charter review. But if they, the mayor and council and the city want to vote. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, we, the people. Three very powerful words. Unfortunately, there's a growing movement in this country and the state to redo the effect when we, the people. We, the people, the charter review commission are trying to reverse them. In fact, our amendments actually expand the democratic process. The charter review mission, which consisted of eleven unpaid volunteer citizens have been for recommended ten changes to the charter. Half of those are directly related to how we affect. How long are also to be served? How we can remove them and how we can change the product. Unlike issue one in the state, which looks to restrict we, the people, we want to expand, we, the people. The amendments are two, eliminating term limits for elected officials. Four, ten-year charter review. Six, rank choice voting. Seven, recall elections. Eight, initiatives of representatives. These span the democratic process, not restricting. I would hope that our council would have the wisdom and the courage to trust we, the people to make good decisions. And yes, vote tonight doesn't guarantee that these amendments pass. We, the people, still have to vote on it in November. However, a no vote tonight robs we, the people, of that chance to vote. If these amendments are truly bad, then citizens will not vote for them. It's just that simple. What's the harm in voting? We, the people choose. I think we call that progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would care to approach the city at this time?
Good evening. I am Wendy Durrin, the chair of the Cleveland Heights University Heights chapter of the League of Women Voters and of Greater Women. After several years of study and of watching the use of rank choice voting in various locations around the country, the League of Women Voters of Ohio has voted to support the option of ranked choice voting. We believe the option of voting for more than one candidate in order of preference would ensure majority rule instead of simple plurality. Inferring that the majority of voters' vote is single candidate acceptable, even if perhaps not their first choice, creates a stronger sense of representation within the community. It is also believed that ranked choice voting would increase the election of Walmart candidates through achieving a majority preference, which would help to reduce the polarization we are seeing in the country. We, the League of Women Voters, chapter of Cleveland Heights University Heights, applaud the city of University Heights for giving serious consideration to this revised method of voting, thereby becoming a leader in Ohio in protecting the rule of the majority. Good thinking.
Thank you.
My, my name is Catherine Brantley. I live at two, two, three, seven. And I just wanted to offer thanks especially to the rec. committee for helping set up the Ray Lang after Memorial. We will have a library set up thanks to the service department. And we will be having a memorial service for remembrance service for Ray Sunday at nine thirty. So thank you, Chris, for all your help in the rec. committee. Thank you for your help. Thank you for the service department. I don't know if anyone's here. And thank you to the mayor for your help. And we're extending invite to all who come to the service department to see like how much Ray affected the community for thirty-plus years working at the school. I don't think we'll ever see that. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brantley. I will be.
Hello, my name is Sean Logan. I reside at three, two, nine, two, seven, East Silver Drive, Lisbon, Ohio, four, 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 three, two. Thank you for welcoming someone from Appalachia, the council meeting. Very impressed with how you organized yourself and very impressed and want to acknowledge the courage of the charter commission and your faith in having charter commission and being in charter form of government in Ohio to allow the voices of the people to have a greater say in how to organize. Very, very important. I am part of a bipartisan statewide effort that is discreetly, but thoroughly assessing the likelihood of bringing rank choice voting to the statewide office and statewide oversight race. And I would like to respectfully, and I appreciate that you allow me at the time, not in, not from your city, to advocate for your vote for amendment number six for rank choice voting. We have been organized for about five years, very formally. One of the original organizers was from the, the, the think tank in County County. John Bigalla from the Center for Community Innovation. Some of you may know John. He and Jean Crebs from Pebble County, and Jean and I served together in the Ohio House in the nineteen nineties. And I wrote, you know, each of you the bio, so I won't go through all that at the moment, but we have, I kind of filled in the spot. John Bigalla, he decided to go do some research on Northwest territory because it's not that subtle. I'm not sure why, you know, if Jean Crebs says, when you're a nerd, you have Steve Union. So what John Bigalla has in his shot is that, so I follow in footsteps and big, big steps, big, big shoes and broad shoulders of folks such as John Bigalla and the thinking and the the various attributes that he has brought, many different societal and institutions in the state of Ohio. So this is one of great interest and labor on our own part to mine and Jean's part to assess how votes, we call the grass cops. We partnered with Kyle Herman from Brankitload, Ohio, also from Northeast Ohio. But we encourage you, this is a very important moment. I think also in Ohio modern history, as you probably know, Cleveland had rank choice voting turn of the century. And so did more other cities in the state. So it is allowed. And I have great confidence in the board of elections as well as the career professional folks at the secretary of state that by twenty twenty-five, the new machinery that played on board of elections was purging that the software will all be installed and is ready to go. I encourage you to check out branch source, uh, rank choice voting resource on RCB, RCB dot org or fairvote.org as a national repository of great great knowledge and great, uh, I think, great guidance as to what rank choice is and how can be applied. And there's nothing to be afraid of rank choice voting, especially for opportunities that is yours that's hoping to charter with you commission proposing such amendments. I describe it as simply changing the incentives of how candidates run the public box. Because you want to feel more than just your base. And that really changed the name as a former elected official myself. I can, I can attest to that. I've, I've I can, I've thought about this myself a great deal. How would I want, how would I approach it? I think I'd approach it the same way, but not everybody, not every candidate would approach it that way. So this allows us to feel free methods for the voters to have a greater say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for making the trip up.
Hello, Kyle Herman, three, six, five, two, Highwood Avenue. So thanks for inviting me back as a guest to talk about our rank choice voting. I actually didn't know that the review commission was even considering rank choice voting and almost sort of program emailed me one morning after they had voted on it and I reached found it online. Or that we have our statewide organization for it and asked if I would be willing to help. And I was one of the original co-founders of Rate the Vote Ohio as a volunteer of the group across the state back in the summer of twenty twenty. And we didn't actually become a staffed organization until late in twenty twenty-two after there was a surge of interest and support across the state, and I'm now the only full-time staff. But before that, I was working on pro-democracy programs in Lebanon and Iraq. And I felt increasingly torn between sprinting and democracy and releasing and trying to save democracy here at home. And I talked with you about the benefits of range was voting. And I've appreciated hearing from so many of you on council already that I like the idea of range was voting, especially for state level elections potentially. And, you know, I know that you've got a lot to consider, the dynamics of your own here. I understand that you may not feel that this council is as polarized and divided as some of our other institutions in Ohio are. And I know I commend you that, that University Heights has such very diverse representation already. So I understand you do not see the need for a rank choice voting here, but I want to thank you and the commission for starting this important conversation. No matter how you stop vote tonight, we've already been having some really important discussions. You've made some really important connections with us, such as at the Board of Elections where we have now been in communication with the director of the Ohio Board of Elections to explain to us that although the machines that they're switching to in August have not yet been certified to use ranked choice voting, they describe a path forward for them to become Ohio certified by the time they would be used in twenty twenty-five. And so as we have been talking with citizens in the community over the past few weeks, all the possibility that you would let them vote to bring range was voting here. We've heard a lot of excitement. I've heard some of that excitement here tonight. And I just want to encourage you to not be afraid of the leadership of this historic vote that takes night collective voters vote on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Michael Mouskis, twenty-five, ninety-two, University of Ohio. First off, I just want to thank the parent right for the great celebration we have this weekend. I had a chance to go myself. A wonderful thing for the community and for all the work that I've heard of for council for a few weeks and we have the funds that we needed to get that across the country, really make the, of a greater effort. I also wanted to speak in support of rank choice voting tonight. Of all the amendments that's proposed tonight, this is the one that most directly impacts the regular voter itself. I hope that you guys would let that voice come to one. Do you make that decision for ourselves? What do you want to ask? We hear a lot of the technical explanations for why this is a good thing about this superpower. How we can be Ohio. But I do want to just remind you that there are those communities that are really looking forward to having a chance if I was out. And so if you let that pass tonight, I'll do my best to reach out to other people like myself, convincing that this is an idea that's worth chasing. But if we don't pass it tonight, I have the opportunity to just work together with the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mouskis. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening?
John Bell, two, two, nine, two, Canterbury Road. I would like to speak in support of allowing residents to vote on all ten of these proposed amendments. I think it makes most democratic sense to do that, especially with council having less than full membership at the moment. And also a council person not being present, that makes each person here that much more powerful and that much more able to deny all of us from having our own voice in the subject. I am heartened at some of the ways that we will hopefully, if certain proposed amendments are passed on the voters and those are voted into the charter, that we will have easier ways to affect our city in the future, not only with elected officials, but also bringing up the ordinances of our own that we would like to write and bring forth to put in the charter. So I think there is a lot of good things in these proposed amendments. And I don't think that the threshold for denying us the vote is because you just don't like if something is outlandish or something is dangerous. I should understand that, but if you just don't agree with amendment, I don't think that that is a good enough threshold to vote, no. I think that's up to us in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Is there anybody else here who would care to address the city this evening? All right. Then we will move on to reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action thereof. Sunday, June eleventh, was the University Heights Fight with the Mayor event, part of the Fight with the Mayor series with Cuyahoga County. I co-hosted this event with council member Brian King. Was happy to have more than two dozen writers plus guests, guest writers from other communities, including county executive Chris Ronaine and Walton Hills Councilmember Raymond Wheaton. Tentatively, I'm looking to schedule another community ride later this summer, perhaps just before we all go back to schools, date TBA. Sunday, June eighteenth, was our second annual Juneteenth event. It was an unparalleled and unprecedented success here in the community. Headlined by Crazy Bone, Bone Thugs, and army thousands of attendees showed throughout the day. What was especially meaningful to me were numerous black senior citizens in our community who have lived here for decades and told me just how happy, how elated they were to be seen and to help the city celebrate with America's Black Independence. And to do so in a significant way. The event was incident-free from a police and fire EMT standpoint. Juneteenth was eventful while being incident-free. In short, this was the biggest and best event we have done to date. My thanks to Jeff Engelbrecht, to the Juneteenth Citizens Committee, to Dollar Bank sponsoring, to Deanna Bremer Fisher and my cook and my staff, John Machala and the service department, to OIC Lieutenant Kevin Bonhaws in the UH Fire Department, to OIC Lieutenant Kevin Ryan at the UH Police Department, to the County Sheriff's Department, and to all the volunteers and vendors, to all the featured talents, speakers, to all the residents and attendees. Thank you all. I don't know how we top this one, but I know we will surge by. After fifty-seven years of the Memorial Day Parade, the Navy will fall fast in twenty nineteen. And our second annual Juneteenth celebration here in University Heights, we keep upping our game, upping our civic engagement, upping our community development, letting people know that this is the city to be in and live in. And in the process, we're letting the world know that this is a diverse and multivalent place. Speaking of that, yes, City Hall is flying the pride flag once again for the month of June. We raised the flag on the morning of June first and will fly it all month, just as it has flown every June since twenty nineteen. I issued a proclamation this year to correspond with the raising of the flag. As long as I am mayor, I intend to fly the pride flag as a celebration of the LGBTQIA+ community and as a reminder that as a civil rights movement, we still have a long way to go to gain full acceptance. Finally, I would like to report on the position of service director. In our next service director, I wanted someone who would share in and implement our city's vision of a modern public works department, not only with modernized services and improved roads, but with year-round arts and recreation offerings. Someone who will help lead in developing the new facilities needed to fulfill this vision. Someone who brings other relevant experience, experience and expertise to move the city forward as we improve our infrastructure and our neighborhoods. With these goals in mind, I am delighted to announce Alan Pennington as the new service director for the city of University Heights. As a licensed professional engineer, Mr. Pennington has a well-rounded background in capital projects, street maintenance. He managed the city of Metter's road program for the last seventeen years. Mr. Pennington has twenty-two years of experience in public project administration, design and inspection. In addition, Mr. Pennington has also served until very recently on Noab's bicycle and pedestrian advisory council. He resigned in conjunction with accepting this position. Prior to starting in Metter, Mr. Pennington's previous work experience includes extensive CT consultants and Gleason Construction. He is a member of the American Society of Civil Engineers as well as the American Society of Highway Engineers. Mr. Pennington is up for his next career challenge. He will succeed because he's smart, he works hard, and he gets things done. I have every confidence that he will do. I have every confidence that he will do an exceptional job running our service department and serving the residents of University Heights. Mr. Pennington's first day of service in University Heights will be Monday, June twenty-sixth. Thank you. This concludes my report. Next item is reports and communications from the City Council and taking action thereof. Mrs. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just before this meeting, we had a building-in housing meeting to wrap up ordinances that have been in the works for many months, one of which will be presented today. I also wanted to just make a comment about the Charter Review. Council was all elected to use our best judgment on behalf of the city's residents. I appreciate all of the work put in by the Charter Review Commission and have reviewed all suggested charter amendments seriously. I sponsored the Charter Review to form the commission because I believed it was time. My personal commitment to the process led me to attend all of the meetings of the commission. So I fully understand the thinking behind each suggested change. I offered suggestions at the beginning of the process as requested on behalf of council to the commission to address issues that the council had encountered over the years for consideration. The commission worked extremely hard. Our charter gives council the power to approve what proposed amendments I mean can move forward to the voters. This requirement was not identified as one that needed to be changed by the commission. The review by council was never meant to be a rubber stamp of what was submitted. Rather, the reason it is there is because the administration and council are the ones who are most familiar with the charter and potential problems that can arise, which sounds great in the abstract, can be problematic when viewed in reality. Some have suggested that by not approving all amendments, that is undemocratic. By paring down the suggestions to send to the voters, we are the very definition of democracy, not to say that I know what the outcome will be. Following the rules is what democracy is all about. The rules for this process are the Charter Review Committee makes a recommendation to council. Council decides what to put on the ballot, and then the citizens decide of those things which get approved. Passing through all of the suggestions through to the voters is not not being democratic. It's inserting the idea of seeking consensus on everything. If council's decision is to reduce the number of proposed changes for the ballot, that's democracy in action, not an undemocratic process. Again, the Charter Review did such an excellent job. I can't say enough about them. They were respectful in their civil discourse, and they've just been an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wallace. Are there any other reports from council at this time? Okay, very good. We will then move to reports and communications from various directors. We'll start with Finance, Mr. Kent.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe everyone. Earlier today, I saw draft statement for the year ended twenty-two. As I discussed in previous reports of the GATT base financial statement presentation, it's eighty-eight pages. Again, when you want to. We are finishing up the fieldwork at the audit next ten days. We hope to have a draft audit report done and some review. Honor report June thirtieth, that end was the author's statement to their review. Once we get all the five approvals on that, I will be back to ask that we have a schedule on post-audit conference where the councils review the details in the report. I have not seen the report as of today or any draft of that, but I've not. That would be in the report, not to say it didn't arise, but it's on. So far, I'm very confident that we will get another audit. That's about all I have for tonight is that's our focus. If the work related to the audit.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? All right, very good. Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. McDonald, no real corporate parent. Thank you. Public Safety Chief Rogers is on vacation, has been excused from this meeting. Fire Chief, are there any reports? Reports of a very huge report. He's moving ahead then to Housing and Community Development. No report. Thank you, Mr. Engelbreit. City Engineer Mr. Cheney has been excused, and there is no report to Communications Engagement Authority. Cook is on vacation, has been excused, and Economic Development, Mrs. Drucker is also on vacation. She is excused. So there are no reports. We now move then to the reading and disposition of ordinances, resolutions, motions, consideration, agenda items. First item is on the agenda is item A, nomination for vacant council seat. Who would like?
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Wallace.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Winwiser for the open. When the show's men's vacation to the city for decades, her knowledge of urban affairs and government in general is vast, should be an asset to this council. She submitted her at her residence place, and she's almost qualified for the position.
We have a nomination of Winwiser for the vacant council seat. Is there a second?
I'll thank you.
Okay, second by Mrs. Marsh. Mayor, before we call the roll, we would ask whether there are any additional nominations? Okay, yes. Are there any additional nominations? See now, is this a debatable motion or do we go straight to the vote? Tell the council. Okay, is there any comment or question discussion before we vote? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call roll.
Mrs. Sacks.
Hi.
Mrs. Marshall.
Mrs. Wallace. Hi.
Mr. Booney.
Nick.
Mr. King.
Nick. Okay, I vote three to the motion favors. Next is item B, ordinance twenty-two-three dash twenty-three, submitting Charter Review Commission closed amendment number one to the Charter of the City of University Heights to the electorate of the city at the November seventh, twenty-twenty-three general election and declaring emergency. This is on emergency. Mr. Collins. Anyone need some votes? Perhaps unless somebody else would like.
Post amendment number one is the amendment that would met our gender equality about charter. I was a council owner. They are anachronistic. Non-genderal relationships about charter of this. This amendment would probably doubt.
Okay, very good. Is there a is there a motion approved? Mrs. Sacks.
May I make a statement?
Yes, excuse me. You have the vote.
Thank you very much. I'm going to make a general statement first that leads into this amendment proposal. The city charter is an important document constituting our city governance. This commission, Charter Review Commission, was established by ordinance set forth by this very University Heights council due to our understanding of the need for periodic review. I want to really, really thank the Charter Review Commission for its outstanding commitment to University Heights, as evidenced by meetings semi-monthly for eleven months, resulting in ten charter amendments presented to City Council today. As an elected member of council, knowing that I would be required to vote on proposed amendments, I took this responsibility very seriously and as such considered a major part of my due diligence to attend practically all commission meetings to witness firsthand the discussion, viewpoints, context, and pros and cons discussed. I was also very clear to observe the rules prohibiting elected officials from providing unsolicited opinions that could influence the commission members during this process. Therefore, I was very much taken aback, and I take strong objection to members of this council and administration have stated publicly and have posted on social media. Quote, "Our city council should not disrespect the eleven months of diligence and thoughtful work of the Charter Review Commission by rejecting any amendment of the commission that the commission has proposed. The only grounds for proper counsel, proper for counsel to reject the proposed amendment were to be that were illegal." Would the voters who elected me prefer that I stay home and just come to today's council meeting to give my rubber stamp approval? Would the voters who elected me prefer I not engage in due diligence and then refrain from sharing any information and perspective with them, which predicates my vote on each amendment in good faith? Is it respectful or disrespectful to the commission to have me diligently abstain from providing my unsolicited opinion, comments, etc., during these seven months as required to avoid influencing the commission and its work? Would it have been appropriate for the commission to refer for members of council during this process when it was prohibited? I believe university resident, University Heights residents do not want elected members of city council to act as a rubber stamp. Therefore, I am not going to act as a rubber stamp. I believe University Heights residents want elected members of city council to engage in due diligence in order to vote accordingly. Therefore, I follow through with due diligence. I believe that regardless of how I vote on each amendment, residents know and the commission knows that I have been very respectful and supportive by showing up and paying serious and thoughtful attention to the workings of this commission. Finally, I know that it would have been inappropriate to engage in discussions with mission members during this eleven-month process, even when it was evident the commission was presented with information that was from personal perspectives, partial versus whole, and at times incorrect, which resulted in the amendments that are presented to council today. We are representative of democracy, and I believe that that's what I represent. And now I'm ready.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Mr. Booney.
Thank you. On the matter, my handle could somebody address the minimum number of appointed votes needed for the proposed amendments from the ballot?
Yes, pursuant to the charter, in order for any charter amendment to be approved and therefore submitted to the electors, a minimum of five votes is necessary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonald. Did you have any further, Mr. King? No, I'll just, I'll just upon. Uh, Mr. King.
Thank you, man. I just wanted to make a statement regarding all of the proposed amendments proposed this evening. It's my intention to vote for all of them. Respect for character for respect for the independence of the Charter Review Commission. Their eleven months of thoughtful deliberation. And have respect for the residents of the City of University Heights. I have a great trust in them and their ability to side these amendments should pass. Last time we went through Charter Review process, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. In the enabling ordinance, there was a feature built into it that stated that council shall place the amendments on the ballot. I think there was a lot of value in that. I think that gave independence to the Charter Review Commission to place amendments before the residents. Unfortunately, the enabling ordinance for this charter review did not have that feature. We have to vote on it this evening, and so only five of us, any one of us voting day will exclude that amendment from being properly voted. So I just wanted to say that I respect the work that's been done here.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else? Well, I'm going to go ahead and say a few things, especially since I was quoted without attribution. So go ahead. Share the larger context of those words. The city charter is the quote-unquote constitution of our city. It is how our city government is organized. It sets forth the structure and fundamental rules of our city government. The proposed charter, city charter amendments from the Charter Review Commission go before the City Council for approval for the November ballot on Tuesday, June twentieth, seven P M. That's today. That's this meeting. And by ordinance, they cannot be tabled. They must be voted on today. If they're not approved today, they are rejected. The ordinance for Charter Review, as mentioned, was sponsored by Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss. The eleven-member Charter Review Commission was comprised of seven city council appointees and four mayoral appointees. Given that the majority of the Charter Review Commission was appointed by city council, it seems redundant that the city council would get a second bite at the apple to agree or deny which amendments go to the voters. Unless there was an amendment which was not legal per our lottery, they should all go to the people to decide. That's the one. The Charter Review Commission met twice a month over a period of eleven months. I attended many of those meetings, and I watched them work. I respect the work they did. We should believe in the process and honor their word and advance to the ballot all ten amendments the commission proposed. I am indifferent about one of these amendments myself, and I'll be happy to discuss that later. But I believe all ten should go to the people to decide. Because I believe in democracy and I believe in our residents. I would not take away your right to vote on any particular amendment, even if I don't support a particular amendment myself. Each amendment requires an affirmative vote of five council members to place it on November ballot. Because of the recent but oncoming resignation on council, there are only six members of council at the moment. And that means if all six members show up on Tuesday and just two members of the council vote no on the amendment, it won't be on the ballot. And as you can see, there's only five members here today. Vice Mayor Weiss started this process, and she's already commented publicly at the last meeting that at least one amendment is a hard enough. She and other members of council should not be taken away over vote on that amendment or on any of them. The people, you, should get to decide. Now noting today that there are only five council members present. Now that means that any one council member voting no is in essence vetoing that charter provision, that charter amendment provision, and depriving our residents of the right to vote on that amendment. I urge that the council have faith in our residents and in their decision-making capabilities and let the residents decide on all ten charters. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? And if not, is there a motion with respect to ordinance twenty-two-three dash twenty-three, first amendment? And just for everybody following, the first amendment has to do with the gender detrowal. Is there a motion approved?
Some.
Motion approved by Mrs. Wallace. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion on the motion? And Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Brad. Hi.
Mrs. Marshall. Hi.
This is why I'm.
Mr. Booney.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi.
And very good. First amendment passes. Next item on the extension rolls. Oh, I'm sorry. This is on emergency, is it?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so well, this was the second reading. Does it, do we require a suspension?
You're right. You're right.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. All right, then the motion carries. We are now on item C, ordinance twenty-two-three dash twenty-four, submitting Charter Review Commission opposed amendment number two to the Charter of the City of University Heights to the electorate of the city at the November seventh, twenty-twenty-three. to the electorate of the city at the November seventh, twenty twenty-three general election, declaring an emergency. Who would like to vote? Just for record, this is the one that discusses, uh, this better proposal, the elimination term.
This charter amendment would eliminate term limits. The current charter indicates that no person shall hold an office in the city for more than four-year elected term or fourteen consecutive years while elected. This would, um, uh, get rid of that language and thereby eliminate term limits.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any discussion on this? Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. Having term limits does not limit people who twelve years in office. It just allows a reset of two to four years before that person may serve and elected to ask me for another twelve years and so on. During this reset period, the person is able to continue demonstrating their commitment to civil service in University Heights by serving on community boards, commissions, et cetera. Having a reset also allows for new people with fresh ideas to be elected. That's something to be.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Is there a motion? So, motion to approve, uh, by Mr. Cooney, is there a second? I'll second, ma'am. Okay, second by Mr. King. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Seth. Nay. This is Michael. Nay. This is Wyatt. Nay. Mr. Cooney.
Nay.
Mr. King.
Okay, motion fails.
Next is letter D, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, submitting Charter Review Commission proposed amendment number three to the Charter of the City of University Heights to the electorate of the city at November seventh, twenty twenty-three general election and declaring an emergency. This is the one that's in regard to the process of the law director appointment. Mr. McDonald, do you care if you speak on this? This charter amendment would, uh, remove the, um, current provisions that indicate that the law director is a council appointment and would cause a position to be a mayoral appointment subject to council approval um, with termination right statement either to the mayor or to council.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any discussion on this? Mrs. Weiss.
Yes, thank you. As I mentioned, um, in the last meeting, there was recent, um, issues with a mayor in the law director. Um, this was not in the distant past. Um, it was seen firsthand by myself. I feel that, um, if the last sentence of Article Six was the director of law may be removed, um, maybe maybe suggested for removal, removal by the mayor and approved by council, I would be considering this more, but um, one person should not be able to remove a director that is, um, that is the, um, counsel for seven as well. So because of that, um, I have, I have, as the mayor pointed out, strong feelings about this.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any further comments, Thomas? Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you, ma'am. I reviewed this very carefully. Um, I took notes. I listened, listened to it over a period of time. Um, I cannot overlook the past corruption with regards to the law director and the administration. Um, and the way that this is written, just to, to clarify, it removes the checks and balances because it allows the mayor to hire and fire the law director without council's approval, making it possible that law directors could be hired and fired continually whenever the mayor disagrees with an opinion. That, and in this sponsor, I really believe, um, base this on his, uh, his professional experience that I very much respect, but that's not what I've experienced as the reality in our city. The fact, though, is a law director serves the pleasure of all city constituents, elected, employed, and residents, and has been accessible to all administration and council on city-related issues. In general, critical decisions seem to me to be more even-handed when in the hands of seven people versus humanely a lone person to solve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. I feel also clarification is that, uh, currently the law director does not serve the pleasure of the mayor or all constituents or all city employees. The law director serves the pleasure of the city council and the city council. The mayor has absolutely no say in hiring or the firing of the city council, or excuse me, not that. Certainly, the, the mayor does not have any role in the hiring and firing of the law director. Um, the, the mayor is essentially powerless in case of a law director who that the mayor would have some kind of issue with, uh, before each termination or discipline of any sort with you. Uh, I know that at the last meeting, there was discussion about how ten years ago the council had cause, and I don't dispute that they had cause to fire that particular law director uh, because of determinations that law director made that favored the administration and did so in a way that was not legally supported by our charter. If this amendment were in place, the city council could still fire a law director for doing exactly that. If this charter amendment had been in place ten years ago, the city council still could have fired that law director without the mayor's approval, without the mayor's consent. And what this does is this puts a law director in the position of recognizing that in representing the city, the law director must balance the issue, the interests of both the city council and the mayor in representing the city as a whole, which currently the charter does not, uh, reflect or mention. And that's why I do support this amendment. And while I would agree with Mr. Myrick, who very eloquently made the case that there are five amendments here that are about democracy and are pro-democratic and are very important, and I won't dispute that. There are five amendments that are. When it comes to the actual day-to-day administration in the city where this mayor and any other mayor is working with this law director or any other law director every day, the idea that the mayor would have no say to who this person is makes no sense. And that's why it's a amendment should be put on the ballot and passed by people. Thank you.
Well, I, oh, I'm then.
Go ahead, Mrs. Marshall.
If this council is part of the process of collecting of office, it's based, we should be part of the process. And that, maybe we can come up with something that has that Indian movement and a way to say. But that's, that's, um.
Mrs. Marshall, are there any further comments? Mrs. Thomas, add to your motion? Okay, is there a motion to approve, um, amendment, uh, three, I M D? Some of them, ma'am. Motion by Mr. King, is there a second? I'll second. Second, Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion on the motions? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Seth. Nay. This is Michael. Nay. This is Wyatt. Nay. Mr. Cooney.
Nay.
Mr. King.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, motion fails. Next is, uh, letter E. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, submitting Charter Review Commission proposed amendment number four to the Charter of the City of University Heights to the electorate of the city on the, at the November seventh, twenty twenty-three general election and declaring an emergency. Amendment number four is the one that would set forth a continual Charter Review, Mr. McDonald.
Uh, yes, uh, this charter amendment would mandate that there be a Charter Review Commission convene at no less than once every ten years, establishes a membership on the Charter Review Commission um, that mirrors, um, the membership of, uh, of this Charter Review Commission, meaning that each person on council gets an appointment, mayor gets four appointments. Um, we, we currently do not have any name in our charter that requires uh, a Charter Review Commission to convene and, um, and you heard um, one of the Charter Review Commission members mentioned earlier that we only have three Charter Reviews on our city system, and, um, it makes sense, um, that something down around the.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any discussion on the same? And it does very much. Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Um, this is one of the, uh, proposed amendments that I, uh, found very interesting, is that it's actually slow to see in the process and that, of course, uh, so it's not reliant on mayor or vice mayor to initiate a Charter Review. It's essentially putting in some parameters that is wanting to take place. And an interesting part, um, that was added here, council shall at least once during each tenure period by ordinance according to Charter Review Commission. Um, as we're discussing different amendments here, uh, that has passed, in theory, uh, some of these amendments, if there were another Charter Review, doesn't have to wait ten years unless these can all come forward again and perhaps give the same, uh, iteration, perhaps even, uh, revised uh, amendment. So that's, these are, this is one of the proposals that are quite interesting, and it really focused on, uh, a process for continuing, uh, the work that there should be.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. King. Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. So I agree with that. That was very well said, Mr. Cooney, focusing on the process, not the person. I also wholeheartedly agree that the charter should be reviewed much more than it has been. However, in order to lessen the possibility of politicizing what is essentially our city's constitution, I think that ten years is just too close. People could still be in office and still be pushing advances. I think that every sixteen years or fifteen years, that was discussed when there is a reset of the elected officials would be more appropriate to ensure that elected officials have rotated off the roles. If updates in the charter are warranted, then an ordinance may be passed by city council similar to what was enacted by the scary Charter Commission and of the last, last year, there would be civil service. So it is doable to, um, to, uh, think about this just a little bit more from a keeping our city, uh, nonpartisan and and keeping it to the process exactly for that reason and apolitical. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Mr. King.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, last meeting, and discussed, think about this, uh, proposed amendment. Um, multiple people have mentioned how there are ten charter, uh, or ten proposed amendments uh, for, for us to review this evening. Um, last time, here's your Charter Review, I believe, there were ten as well. I commented that's maybe too many. I, I believe that having a process in place, review the charter every ten years could help with that. Regularly be pulling the hood up on, on our charter and, uh, and seeing what needs to be, what needs to be tweaked and that. I mean, I'm not see ten. You know, as we do these more often, I might not see ten of those amendments come or we see five. I, I, I think that, uh, this proposed amendment, um, I, I, I think it puts in that framework to regularly look at our charter and, uh, that's spending.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. King. Ms. Marshall.
Um, and I agree with, in, I, I think, um, ten years or even less. And I do think it would be good to to have that, I'd put it to the, for the revision and things like that, too, but I, I don't, I think ten would be long. Ten or less as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion? Yeah, yes, Mrs. Marshall. Okay, uh, motion to approve by Ms. Marshall, is there a second? I'll say, second, Mr. Cooney. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
This is Seth. Nay. This is Michael. Nay. This is Wyatt. Nay. Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye. And what's next?
Next is letter F, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one seven, submitting Charter Review Commission proposed amendment number five to the Charter of the City of University Heights to the electorate of the city at November seventh, twenty twenty-three general election and declaring an emergency, um, emergency. Amendment number five was Department Day Modernization. Uh, yes, this, uh, amendment would update references in the charter. Um, it would change the Department of Law to the Law Department, the Department of Finance to the Finance Department, the Division of Police, the Police Department, the Division of Fire, the Fire Department, the Division of Building Engineering and Session to the Building Department.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any discussion on that? Is there a motion? Correct. Yes, Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. I think this is very important to move forward because it has merit, especially not just with, with being cumbersome and that sort of thing, but when leading forward with, uh, regionalism and other types of preparation, if you like, and I, and, um, really follow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any, excuse me, Mrs. Sacks, is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Um.
Okay, motion approved by Mrs. Sacks, is there a second?
Uh, thank you.
Second by Ms. Marshall. Just, just for my own certification, do you prefer to be addressed as Ms. Marshall or Ms. Martin? Miss? Miss? Okay.
Thank you.
There, um, guessing, changing each, second by Ms. Marshall. Thank you. All right, um, any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Seth. Hi. This is Michael. How. This is Wyatt. Hi. Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is letter G, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, stating Charter Review Commission proposed amendment number six to the Charter of the City of University Heights to the electorate of the city at November seventh, twenty twenty-three general election and declaring an emergency. This is the amendment on rank choice voting.
Uh, mayor, I'm gonna defer to an apartment like Cicero who's giving this evening. What else? Mr. Cicero, just say that you're reacting this, and I want you to come up and give a soft look for the time of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Cicero.
Thank you, everybody. Evening, and, uh, council. Uh, the CRC had recommended amendment providing for the election of the mayor and members of council by rank choice voting, also known as R C V. It would permit voters to rank up to six candidates for a specific office, no matter what. Uh, the votes are counted using every voter's first choice. Then, if there's not a majority for one position, then the bottom voter, bottom candidate, gets knocked off and so on, and that's around that. Not to be flippant, but it's done in many major sports leagues for MVP already. Uh, it is done in other states. I know there was some discussion, uh, and I, it's various, uh, conversations, uh, during the last two weeks over whether or not Ohio is prepared or can't do it. Uh, my understanding is that when I spoke to the Board of Elections, which was, I checked my records back in thirty March, I spoke with a member of the Office Candidate Services of the. I spoke with a member of the Office Candidate Services of the Pac-10 Board of Elections who indicated that higher county was prepared to do it. But they're choosing to vote in which, so there's been some emails back and forth between various individuals, members of this council. Uh I don't have any extra information for you that on that tonight, so that's my understanding where it stands. This is what I would say. If council puts it, passes this and it goes through a vote of the people, and the people pass it, it's almost as if, and I I mean this also in most of this area. Many times local municipalities complain about unfunded mandates that the state or the federal government make us pay, whether it's municipalities or school districts or whatever. This would be the reverse. So if you put it on the ballot and it's with electorate votes to pass it, then you would require the state of Ohio to do so. So I just want you to think that.
Yeah, I could just add to that real briefly. I've said this many times before and repeated it. It's always a mistake for any broad department of municipal cooperation to see that you're on the side around home rule. Uh we are a charter municipality with home rule, home rule powers, and it seems to me that there is nothing that's more local um that's more a matter of local self-government than global options. That would be the city's legal position. With charter range, so on, correct?
I have a question.
Very good, thank you. Go ahead, Mrs.
You just said something that I wasn't aware of. It can have up to six candidates and then it's capped?
It's not capped. All voters have to do is rank the top six. So if there's eight people in a race, say for a council, say eight people there, you just have to rank the top six.
What happens to the other two?
And that's specific vote, they don't count because they they didn't make the top six.
So then, and now we have no, we have seven people running for council this month, correct?
Well, no, you can still have a number of people running. It's just you only
But they don't even appear, so it has the appearance of limiting choices for
Well, no, currently you vote three people, more than three people.
But it's even on the, some people aren't in the box and some people power the box.
No, all you have to do is do ranking only the top six. So if you want to think about it like this, you're under voting.
Six?
You're under, you're 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 under voting on two candidates.
There you go, the under vote.
That's really what you do. The amendment before you is you only have to rank six, not every candidate.
Just just for clarification, if if there are eight candidates, all eight of you are on ballot, you only rank.
You only rank six.
But is it that square, the centricus, like an example? So six are in the box.
Eight are on, eight are in the box. Eight are in the box.
Oh, this. But it disqualified their ballot if somebody put seven and eight?
I I think it's the software would only have you lay the top six.
Thank you.
Mr. King.
Thank you. The kind of word of election at this time, the staff have the capability to to process a a a rank choice voting election.
Not for the next election, which is August of this year. That is my understanding, reading discourse back and forth with members of the election. And they provided anything in writing to say that would be, you would be able to
um process the election results with rank choice voting.
I believe that based on what I have read from the emails back and forth, and then it's an open issue with the Secretary of State, but again, if if you passed it and the voters of the city passed it, state of Ohio and Frank Rose's Secretary of State has no choice. They have to enforce.
Thank you.
Just a question for the law. I I appreciate the opinion that was rendered, uh but I was hoping you'd clarify on this point. It is not the law department's position that this particular amendment is in any way illegal. Correct?
Oh, yeah.
Uh we don't need doubts.
The position is that the the issue of how conduct a local election is a matter of local self-government and the city has home rule powers to choose. I was going to do that.
And regardless of the information that members of the commission were provided in February, March, and what I was provided in speaking with the Board of Elections, it doesn't matter if the Board of Elections or the state of Ohio don't have a system in place. If this were passed by the voters, you, the state has to provide something. In other words, we are a home rule charter municipality, and this is the law of this city. And Cuyahoga County Board of Elections and the state of Ohio, you have to provide us with something to effectuate.
Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, I'm I'm sorry we can't take comment as I I I appreciate that though. Can I call on you? Is there any further comment? Well, Ms. Marshall.
So I had the opportunity because I had some questions. And I took the time to contact the Board of Elections myself. When we're doing so, I spoke with Mike West, who is the manager of our district department. And he said that 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 the Board of Elections is not currently ready or prepared for rank choice voting. And with the new machine and the new company that they're going to, that won't, they won't be prepared to do it. He said that there would have to be state legislation that put placement order for rank choice voting to um to be handled by them. Again, I'm just telling you, he said that there was a newspaper article or reporter that made some comments, and he asked that reporter to correct it or comment. I don't know, because I didn't see the article. Um. He said something about unattributed statements that were in the newspaper. Again, from what, from what I understood in our conversation is the current machines are not equipped to handle the rank choice voting. He said there was a statement made that they were eager and ready, and he said that he can assure that no one there told anybody that. Of course, no, he can speak for everybody. He doesn't know who spoke who. I'm just going by what he said. And that was just um something that I wanted to know about. The division as to if, I always wanted to have pressure that the Board of Elections was there. Now, I am learning something new from this, this one, but I didn't know, and I didn't get the understanding that once we approved it locally, that the state would have to do something. I didn't get that impression.
No, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you didn't move on then. Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Sands.
Okay, I had quite a bit to say, so I hope you'll stay with me. Because I gave a lot of thought to this and engaged in more due diligence with regard to this proposed amendment than any other. I posed questions at the June fifth council meeting. Uh they were unable to be answered by the commission at that point. And so in an effort to continue my due diligence preparation for tonight's vote, I reached out to the Cuyahoga County Board of Elections. I asked them, did University Heights Charter Review Commission members who sponsored the amendment contact the Board of Elections to research the Board of Elections' position and level of preparedness to implement? I'm going to call it RCB. We all know what that is. And if so, who did they speak to approximately one? Next thing, what is the Board of Elections' level of preparedness to implement RCB when it is not being done elsewhere in the state of Ohio? Another question, is RCB as effective in smaller city elections like University Heights as they may be in larger city elections, which was discussed, it was described tonight, so thank you. Is it possible to pilot RCB in our University Heights elections by specifically implementing RCB only for the mayoral election while maintaining the current kind of traditional uh voting procedures for council at large? The thought is that the mayor's race for one single seat, which would end up in a greater than fifty percent mandate, may be less confusing to the voters to start with than the city council race, which has three to four seats at every election, every other election with several candidates simultaneously running for office. I also asked if the RCB, they will wear if RCB reduce or eliminate the issue of under voting. So in my effort to be transparent, I told Board of Elections that I would share their responses with my council colleagues, which I'm doing in public tonight and members of the Charter Review Commission, which I'm doing as well. So everyone is clear what my due diligence was and going forward with my vote. So I reached out to um, I reached out to Mr. Lawler's office and Mr. Milne returned my calls. Um and I sent this email there, but surprisingly, District Anthony Pilati, the director of the Cuyahoga County Board of Elections responded to it. And he said, quote, "All voting equipment and the corresponding software that is used to create and tabulate ballots must be federally certified by the Election Assistance Commission and subsequently certified by the Ohio Board of Voting Machine Examiners and the Ohio Secretary of State." Currently, none of the systems certified for use in Ohio facilitate rank choice voting. Cuyahoga County is currently transitioning electoral, election equipment vendors to their ballot group from ESNS. My contacts with their ballot group, state or system, is not currently certified to conduct rank choice voting in any state. The Cuyahoga County Board of Elections is not in a position to comment on any of the other questions regarding effectiveness in voting, et cetera, as we never have nor are currently able to conduct an election of this sort. Therefore, the Cuyahoga County Board of Elections has no level of preparedness or ability to implement rank choice voting since it is not supported by the current versions of Ohio certified election equipment. And then the Secretary of State's office and I would be getting a discussion next week regarding rank choice voting. So, oh, and you finished to answer Ms. Marshall, Ms. Marshall's comment. I hope this provides some insight into this matter, and the UH Charter Review Commission did not contact us, so the heads of it did not contact them in advance of the Cleveland dot com article to inquire about Cuyahoga's ability to conduct a ranked choice voting election. I voted, I forwarded, and again, in an attempt to be transparent, I forwarded this email as soon as I got it to Mr. Worth, I'm the chair, Mr. Cromryne, the sponsor, and Mr. Cicero, who will be legal representative. This prompted an email from Mr. Cromryne, Chief Counsel, which in part stated, not just say part, the audio of the June fifth council meeting starting at about one oh one point one five shows that I said that the Cuyahoga County voting machines are capable of conducting RCB elections and that Cuyahoga County is ready to implement RCB. These statements were based on this twenty twenty-one assessment by the Range Choice Voting Resource Center, which I submitted to the CRC as supporting materials for this proposed amendment. Mr. Cromryne went on to state, quote, "I did not say that the CRC had contacted the Board of Elections about RCB. I have not contacted anyone at the Board of Elections about RCB myself. I also did not say that the Board of Elections was eager to conduct an RCB election." Finally, Mr. Cromryne wrote, "I encourage you to invite representatives from the Board of Elections to the June twenty meeting to answer your questions about implementing RCB and any other election related proposals." So in addition to that, on June sixteenth, members of council and administration received a lengthy email from Cal Harmon, Executive Director, Rank of Vote of Ohio, who attempted to discretionist Pilati, the executive director of Board of Elections, stating, quote, "Tony Pilati has misinformed regarding the Board of Elections' preparedness to conduct elections with rank choice voting," end quote. In addition to the Charter Review Committee, in addition to that, the the Review Commission chair, Mr. Worth, I called me to find out where I stood on rank choice voting issue, to appeal to me in favor of RCB. He said that the Board of Elections would hand count the RCB ballots if the voter machines did not handle it. But I did not hear from them that he spoke firsthand to anyone at the Board of Elections to to verify this is bad. Finally, Mr. Harmon and his colleague Will, or me, and the Vice Mayor, some his duty and celebration to find out where we stood on the RCB issues, willing to provide additional information when I asked him directly. Mr. Harmon confirmed that the information he provided to Mr. Cromryne upon which Mr. Cromryne presented to the commission was not current. It was from twenty twenty-one. It was two years old. Mr. Harmon also said that he was the first who spoke to the Board of Elections. When I asked who he spoke, who Mr. Harmon spoke to, he said it was his very close friend from college who worked there. I told Mr. Harmon that I spoke to someone and it was the same person. But the person I spoke to also left me a voicemail message that I got that has very different information, saying unequivocally that they are not ready and they they do not have the capabilities. I had to hear my people put it to the microphone. And that's what led to the communication from Director Pilati. In consideration of all this due diligence, this brings me to propose RCB amendment before us today. Number one, regarding RCB as a remedy for under voting, which I've heard many times at the commission meetings. I create um no one has been able to successfully review this. I, quite frankly, I just think under voting may not go away, so I'm not sure that any election type people will will make sure this, but I'm very interested in in figuring it out because voters just may not. I'm sorry?
Yeah, I I'm sorry.
I'm I'm not, John. I have
Yeah.
A question. I have, voters may not consider under voting to be a problem since people are inclined to vote. I didn't say a lot, just that what you told me. Are inclined to vote for candidates. People aren't going to vote for candidates who they have no idea what they stand for or who they are. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But that's a behavior that is our voters prerogative. Regarding Mr. Cromryne's correspondence, Mr. Cromryne's data submitted to the commission from a third party special interest group was two years old. The information I got from the Board of Elections was current, was now. Mr. Cromryne, not the executive director of the Special Interest Group of our council, but did not bring a representative from the Board of Elections and did not present both sides of the issue necessary to make this very important decision. A member of the commission even publicly stated that she felt confident, and this was at the June fifth meeting, with the RCB, since the proposal sponsored sponsors indicated the Board of Elections was prepared to move forward. So one wonders why Mr. Cromryne didn't clarify this on the spot when he had the opportunity to do so publicly at the June fifth council meeting. Regarding Mr. Harmon's discounting of Mr. Pilati in the Cuyahoga County Board of Elections, I have the utmost respect for our Cuyahoga County Board of Elections because I witnessed firsthand its efforts to remain impartial. This is especially important as University Heights politics is nonpartisan. Our most recent twenty twenty-one council election, initially in our most recent election, four candidates, including myself, Mr. Kinnon, um who were within one half of one percent of each other, led to not one, but two recounts. City council candidates were all invited to Board of Elections to watch the second recount with um representative of their choice. I was there, Mr. Kinnon's partner was there, uh Councilman Kings, um Mrs. Spinderman was there, his representative, Councilman Rock was there. And what we witnessed was the Board of Elections with the utmost integrity, diligence, and dependability, period. Having witnessed firsthand, uh I have every confidence in what our county's Board of Elections says today. Regarding Mr. Harmon's discussion with the Board of Elections, one wonders why the executive director of Rank Choice Voting Ohio chose to bypass reaching out to the director of the Board of Elections except for today. Uh instead, Mr. Harmon chose to speak to his close college friend, who was a supervisor and an assistant to a middle manager. Uh, instead, Mr. Herman chose to speak to his close college friend, who was a supervisor and an assistant to a middle manager. But may not have actually, he got information, I believe that, but maybe not had access to the information that he could have gotten speaking director to director. Regarding piloting for the R C B for the mayor's race. This may be something we should explore in the future at such a time when the Board of Elections states that is ready to move forward with R C B. And as an overall observation, University Heights is small and they're walkable. Candidates need to walk the city and work hard to make themselves known. On the high end, we could have four thousand votes, knowing that rate voting may make more sense and could be useful in large cities. On a broad scale, I am so glad that this discussion is now been elevated to the Secretary of State level. And on the local scale, this very important issue needs more work, including current information and all relevant input from all stakeholders sitting at the same table. So we can make a fully informed current decision. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mrs. Stantz. Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor. You're diving way too much into the tech, the current technical constraints. Takes a lot for me to say that, being someone who makes the career in technology. The B O E is a bureaucracy. That does not have the ability to dictate how we form our elections. Our line only with our charter. By passing this amendment, we will create the need for the Board and the state to support us. This proposed amendment would ensure candidates win with a majority without an expense primary or a runoff. As Mr. Pyrick said earlier. This proposed amendment would help to make. Would help to make us more perfect union. We should pass this amendment on to the voters so that they can solve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Is there, oh, Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I feel that there are a lot of great things in the range choice voting. Now, one thing that I was, um, that I was liking was the minimize, minimize the wasted vote. But I got a little confused when Mr. Cromryne was discussing the fact that there's up to sixteen candidates. The votes are top six, but he can have eight in there and that's considered like. Al- almost like within votes, no? Did I just understand that?
Uh, of course, on Mr. Cromryne.
Did I just understand that? So. There can be the top six candidates, but there can be up to eight candidates on the.
You could have fifteen candidates on the ballot, it doesn't matter. Every candidate against the requisite number of signatures would be on the ballot. The proposal, as it is written and passed and recommended by the Commission, only the top six get ranked.
Okay, so that's still stayed in line with minimizing wasted vote.
We still have just, if you, you only rank the top six, so if there's, say, ten candidates.
Well, Mr. Cicero, you mean the voters' top six, not the top six to say appear on the ballot?
No, the top six is ranked by the voters.
Thank you, I feel like there was some confusion.
Yeah, so you have.
Six out of the ten, my top six that I like out of the ten when I'm voting. And I'm gonna choose six of those people, then that minimizes the under voting.
I'm not. I'm not an expert in that to say, do you know what I mean? But what I would say to you is that you ran six people out of the ten. I might have a different six and my six might include the four that you already ranked. So i- it does do that. But, you know, I mean, we had ample discussions on the Commission meetings. There was discussion about, does it really appear under voting? I don't know, I don't have the answer for that. Uh, I was, you know, dispense some legal advice, not affect.
Okay. I did have a lot of confusion, um, when I was on the. But I did, once I listened and learned three things, I did say that I was for. I also was under the impression that the Board of Elections that conducts our elections was prepared to handle the election. And so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marshall. Is there any further comments? Well, I'll just speak very briefly, um, I, I believe most of these points covered, but. I, I do think, I mean, and, and the Charter Review proceedings speak themselves, so if I am in any way mischaracterizing what I saw. For the actual background. You know, one of the things I think drove was the idea that, uh. You might want to explore whether we wanted to have a primary or a runoff election. Um, particularly in the mayor's race, but. But, you know, but generally, and, and this was viewed. Part to be an instant runoff where you didn't have to have two elections. You saved the city the expense of the second election, you save the candidates the expense of the second election. You save the voters the inconvenience that they return to polls for a second election. And when it comes to the council folks, the council candidates, you know, I use the example last time and I'm happy to use it again. Um, you know, all of us, most of us here, you know, eat pizza. And we probably have opinions as to which pizza places in town we love. And we can probably rank, you know, six right here in around University Heights that we, you know, order in order of preference, depending on what is the want. You know, we, you know, as somebody who grew up on David Letterman, you know, I watched top ten lists every night, saw, you know, top ten things over and over again. I read, I hit those clickbait articles on Cleveland dot com about who has the best burgers and who has the best wings in town. And seen all the votes on C Magazine about, you know, various establishments. You know, we, we are constantly ranking and, and deciding, you know, in everyday life. Items, you know, we go car shopping and we, we might have one car in mind or another car in mind or. Or a third, depending on what we find on the lawn and what deal we can strike. And in the end, you know, we kind of rank them in our heads before we end up picking the stuff. We, we make these kinds of decisions all the time, so to go into a polling place and be able to rank. Six council members is, is, is not going to be an unnatural thing to do because it's so much like, well, all the other. Things that we weigh in everyday law about decisions and, and, and preferences. That said, that said, the more complicated piece of this, I think, is in the actual counting of the votes, which, you know, that's, that's the backroom stuff. That's, that's what the Board of Elections does. It's no surprise that the Board of Elections would say that here we are today on this day not ready to do this because. No community in Ohio County is currently doing it, so, you know, as, why would a bureaucracy prepare for. Something that isn't actually happening until something actually occurs to demonstrate that it is looked at. If we do this. If we pass this tonight and if the people of University Heights then vote for. The Board of Elections, the state of Ohio, they'll have to give it to us, they will have to prepare, and they'll have two years to make the preparations. And that's more than enough time. More than enough time to have something in place for us by twenty twenty. So this is one of those things where, you know, I get that the Board of Elections, you know, certain folks there may not want to have to deal with that. But nobody's saying that they actually can't. They're just saying that right now, they're not ready. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't be ready. So this again is something where I think the discussion is done. I, I, I love the fact we're having this conversation, I'd love to see it continue. I would love to be able to debate this issue all the way until October. Which is why I think we should pass it here tonight and let the people. Thank you. Is there any further comment and not is there a motion? Oh, I haven't been, Ms. Marshall?
Uh, again, when I was told that, um. It had to be some state legislation that took place when I made that statement, someone and I dare say that's not true. So I, I, I just want to know if that was. From someone that legally knows that that's not true. I, I, my concern is I just. In the end, if we do take it to our voters and, and, and we as residents do. Out for the range choice voting. Are we causing a problem for our city as a success of our election? If there's like this long time process, I know you said it can be done within two years. But do we know that?
I, I cannot predict for you how the local Board of Elections will respond, nor can I predict exactly how the Secretary of State will respond. I, I can't say that the city's legal position is that we have the right to do this as we are a chartered municipality with home role powers. And that how to conduct a local election is almost uniquely a matter of local self-government. Um, and, and that is a key phrase in the Ohio Constitution. Charter municipalities have the right to enact laws that govern matters of local self-government. And how you choose your elected officials. Um, I, I can hardly conceive of a court disagreeing with that position. Whether we end up having to fight for that or, or merely persuade. Um, the officials at the Board of Elections and elsewhere, I can't predict, I don't know. But I do know that that is our legal position, that will always be our legal position.
Thank you, Bill. Is there any further discussion or is there a motion?
So moving on, motion to approve. And the number six by Mr. King, is there a second? Second, okay, second by Mr. King, any discussion on the motion? There is no discussion, uh, Mrs. Thompson, sweet call.
Mrs. Sax, nay. Mrs. Reddell, um. This is why, nay. Mr. Tony?
Nay.
Mr. King?
Oh. Okay, motion fails the amendment things. Next is item H, ordinance twenty twenty three dash twenty nine submitting. Charter Review Commission proposed amendment number seven to the Charter of the City of University Heights to the electorate of the city of November seventh, twenty twenty three general election, declaring an emergency, this is an emergency. Number seven is on recall elections.
Uh, yes, this, uh, we try to amend it for it. Um, cause our recall vision in the charter to be consistent with, um. Mainstream recall visions, um, current division is, um, very quirky. And results in essentially a runoff election, um, by the party who is. Softly recalled as a candidate, um, in, in what rounds for runoff election. Uh, this charter amendment will give electors of the city the right to circulate a petition stating the reasons for recall. And then the ballot question, uh, that would be submitted to voters as somebody shall be named on the elected official, if recall. Be recalled or removed from the office that year she holds. Um. That's a motion. Okay, thank you, Mr. McHann.
Is there any discussion? And is there a motion?
Oh.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Sax, say so.
Okay.
Second by Ms. Slane. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thompson, sweet call.
I, Ms. Marshall, I. This is why, I. Is between.
I.
Mr. King.
I. Motion carries. Next is item I, ordinance twenty twenty three dash thirty submitting Charter Review Commission proposed amendment number eight. To the Charter of the City of University Heights to the electorate of the city of November seventh, twenty twenty three general election. And declaring an emergency, this is an emergency, number eight is on initiative referendum, Mr. McHann.
I guess, uh, Mayor, this would slightly modify our initiative referendum and recall provisions, but important. And, and so far as it would change the percentages, um. Of, uh. Uh, signatures required and would change the method of calculating those. Um, to be based on the total number of voters casting out of the last regular municipal election. So the percentage would be based off that as opposed to registered electors. Um, it was pointed out in a conversation with the Board of Elections that. Uh, the current provision which measures the percentage against registered electors really cannot be. Um, enforced because that number fluctuates at the end of a moment in time. Whereas the total number of voters casting out of the last, last regular municipal election is always a stale number.
Very good, thank you, Mr. McHann, Mrs. Slane.
Yes, same to the other, um, point that I just wanted to make was that. Currently, the way that this is set up is that there is not enough time for actions details, um, to be processed, is that correct, Mr. Cicero?
It is correct. What the law specifically requires that those time periods be extended.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cicero. Any further discussion? And if not, is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Mrs. Weiss, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mrs. Sax, any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thompson, sweet call.
That, I, Ms. Marshall, I, Ms. Bar, and Mrs. Green.
I. I. Very good, motion carries. Next is item J, ordinance twenty twenty three dash thirty one submitting Charter Review Commission proposed amendment number nine. Charter of the City of University Heights to the electorate of the city of November seventh, twenty twenty three. General election declaring an emergency, item J, amendment number nine. This pertains to the residing officer at council meetings.
I guess this charter amendment would change the residing officer of the mayor to the vice mayor. Um, I think during the last meeting, Mr. Cicero commented that. It may be the case of the fact that our charter. Um, currently has the mayor residing over council meetings, uh, maybe a vestige from the time when you were the village leader. Um, villages in the state of Ohio. Um, in all cases, have council meetings that are presided over by the mayor. Um, and in villages, the mayor can be a tightly vote. Uh, of course, we do not have those kind of divisions and it's a more customary or, or popular arrangement for. Uh, a member of the council to be, I'm in charge of residing over council meetings.
Very good, thank you, Mr. McHann, Mrs. Slane.
Yeah, thank you, this is, um, for Mr. McHann, well, and Mr. Cicero. Um, to give your review, um, currently sit on a, there's a lot of other city council that has the vice mayor or council president as a one presiding.
No, my, my other two municipal clients, uh, are both villages, and so in each of those cases, the mayor resides over.
Or in a castle.
I know, Luke is more of a mystery village. Uh, Richmond Heights, the council president runs the meetings and it's actually a specific office. It's not, if it's not one of the members of council, we clarify a candidacy or running president of council.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, so it would probably.
South Bublin, president of council runs the meetings.
Okay, so if you, I just have some specific questions, so I would assume the mayor gives a mayor's report?
Correct.
Okay, and then is the mayor still allowed to put legislation on the agenda?
Correct.
And how does, does the mayor, if the mayor has something to say, let's say during a meeting. Are they called on or are they considered part of the audience for a director? Where if it's an audience member, they're not allowed to be called on during a meeting or their director, they're allowed to specifically come up to vote.
The mayor has a seat on the council dais and I believe the way that this amendment is structured by the Commission. The mayor can participate in the discussion of any, uh, legislation or motion. That's how the Commission wants it.
Perfect, thank you.
Mrs. Stantz.
Thank you, it's a question also.
Thank you. It's a question also. Um. So what are the duties of the mayor in that scenario? Are they? Are they the same or different otherwise than the way we have it set up here?
The mayor no longer runs the meeting. The mayor is no longer responsible for putting the agenda together. The mayor would be no different than any other member of council that would submit post legislation to the vice mayor. And the clerk and the vice mayor would put the agenda together. And. The vice mayor would reside over the meetings just like the mayor does now.
I have two questions with that. One is. So the directors report to the mayor and in and in order to get the agenda that. The new uh vice mayor is head of council, but designing the council. Would need to speak to the directors. Is that how it works in the Heights? Wherever you said that was, is there more just uh communication or how does it work?
My understanding, uh and I have a more intimate. Working experience with South Eastwood. I've been the acting law director there often for twenty years. Is the mayor speaks with the department heads. And if the department has needing, they may give it to the mayor. The mayor then communicates it to the clerk and the president of council and it's placed on the agenda. So in reality, I suppose if this were to be passed by a voting people, it'd be an extra step. But it's an extra step that every other city lands in the middle of the days.
I understand it takes some effort to put the agenda together um with reduced responsibilities. Is there a change in compensation?
That's not. That would be up to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, your comments? And is there a motion?
So.
Motion approved by Mrs. Wong. This is very sad.
Okay.
Second by Miss March. Discussion on motion? This is Thomas Weebo.
This is Seth. Hi, this is Michael. And this is White. Hi.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi. Motion carries. Next is item K ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two submitting charter review commission post amendment number ten. To the charter of the city of University Heights to the electorate of the city of November seventh twenty twenty-three general. Election declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Uh item ten is the is on anti-discrimination.
Is this uh? Amendment simply add non-speech language uh to the charter. Uh we heard at a prior meeting that um this uh. We not uh. We will be provided um kind of private clause of action. Um or or create any um exposure to liability for the city that um doesn't already currently exist. Um and the language speaks for itself that it's broad and all comes.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Questions, comments? Yes, Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. Um I support anti-discrimination. Um I don't want to mislead residents that this would be a house of porridge or anything. Does this in any way mislead residents of voters to think? That they have um some sort of protection? That they're really not entitled to, whether or not it's an actual.
I I don't think so. Do you care to comment that? I mean, th- these protections exist in law currently. It's as I had previously stated during the mission meetings, I was a council meeting. Council member. This if passed by the voters. Gives no private clause of action to anybody. If it were to be violated. Uh much as, and I don't think a lot of people know, that's very something about the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. You never hear about anybody suing for civil rights under Ohio law because there is no provision to money damages or junk that will be violated. That's all under federal law. So this is a statement in my legal opinion. Uh but I say that not as just as the simple law directly, but I am also the legal counsel for the normal self insurance for this community. So I defend municipalities when they get sued for a variety of things. This does not create a right of cause of action for this further exposure to the city of its offices. They're on boardings.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Sisro. Questions, comments? Is there a motion?
So.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Wong. This is second.
Awesome.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion on the motion? This is Thomas Weebo.
Seth. Hi, this is Michael.
Hi, this is White. Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi. And motion carries. So just to to recap. We got over the ten proposed amendments from the charter review commission. Amendments. One, five, seven, eight, nine, ten, total of six amendments have been approved. For November ballot. Amendments two, three, four, and six were rejected and will not advance to the level. Thank you. The next item is item L, Mr. McConville. You asked me to call on you before I read item L.
Thank you, Mayor. Um prior to this meeting, there was a building housing committee meeting at which. Um this ordinance, um which is an ordinance that would create apartment building registration and inspection regulations. Was considered a note for event that council members that there's one change to the ordinance. Uh and that is that in section fourteen ninety-three point oh one A. The first sentence will be deleted and replaced with the following language. An owner or manager shall be required to obtain a rental permit for each apartment building located in the city.
That is. Well, when we get to O, we state that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Sisro. And so I will call on you before we let her own. Let's see now to letter L. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four amendment codified ordinance section twelve eighty point one oh. Entitled rental of one or two family-owned units in U one and U two districts. Standardize the original application process and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Who would like to take the floor?
The mayor, I'll have to take the floor. Um this is an ordinance that's come out of the building of the housing committee. Um and was requested by our director of uh housing and community development. That would add language to our rental registration ordinance that would um. Create uh uniform upgrades each year um with respect to which our rental registration must comply. Uh the the timing is that uh applications would be um. Advertised for in March, submitted by May and granted in June each year.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Floor is open. Any comments, Mrs. Wong?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank Mr. Engelbreit and Mr. McConville. Um they were three very lengthy and detailed ordinances. That we looked up here in the last weeks. Um it's it was in the subject for a good long, so I just want to thank them for their.
Thank you, Mrs. Wong. Is there a motion?
So.
On emergency.
Seven by emergency.
Very good. Uh we have a motion to approve on emergency by Mrs. Wise. Is there a second? Awesome. Second by Mr. King. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll take two looks. The first is on suspension of rules. This is Thomas.
This is Seth. Hi, this is Marshall. Hi, this is White. Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Uh, no main motion.
Would you say hi, this is Marshall. Hi, this is White. Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Uh. Very good. Motion carries. Next is item M ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five amendment codified ordinance section. Four thirty-two point four nine entitled use of electronic scooters. And were shared over with devices to expand the use of electronic scooters in the city. And authorize the mayor to enter to a memorable understanding of Iowa County and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Mr. King, you're the sponsor. Do you want to speak on?
Uh yes, Mayor. Thank you. Go for it. Uh just a little background on this ordinance. Uh in twenty twenty-one, we passed two ordinances authorizing a pilot program for. Twitter ride share within University Heights. There were some pretty heavy restrictions on it and. Um the only vendor that that took us up on the off was. We heard it. Uh it's a very little usage. Um you know, the the hope that we had pilot was that we would we would get data so we would. Able to uh craft uh the ordinance. Clearly, we ran into issues. But uh we really had no data at all to to work on because of the restrictions. Namely, those restrictions uh that they could only be used on certain roads. Uh Taylor Road, Green Road, Warrensville Center Road, Meadow Brook. And uh Paramount for some reason, which is in in university. Um so this ordinance, I'll thank uh. Mr. McConville for. He made to get this together, presenting what. Seating a. Uh primarily, it's uh removes the pilot language from the uh from. From our current code by ordinances. Um. Moves uh time restrictions that were placed on devices previously. They can only be operated between seven AM and seven PM. And also they added a prohibition on more than one buyer. Um being on the devices that once that was a recommendation. Does anyone have any questions on the ordinance that's presented to you?
Very good. Uh, this was.
I just have a comment. Sure. I'll thank Mr. King for taking this over. Um the the committee really felt that it was very restrictive and and the goal was to be able to. Hypothetically get off the bus and go to your home and you really couldn't do that. Um and again, uh no company wanted to do business in University Heights because it almost. Um wasn't possible uh for them to to basically to make any money um in our city. Um I think we have some good safety precautions in here, which is which is um. Appropriate for the city um and maybe any ordinance generating some really good data, but please chief said that you'll report. Um next spring um to us to see how um how. Uh you know, the safety um aspect is going.
Thank you, Mrs. Wong. Mr. King.
Uh thank you, Mayor. I'd say one more comment and. On uh scooters within the University Heights. Um I I think this also plays well into the work that Mr. Engelbreit. Is doing with South Eastwood and Cleveland Heights to implement a network of neighborhood agreements. That connect our cities and uh by uh nature today connecting into the city of Cleveland well. Um so I I think it really. Based in promoting multimodal transportation. And be able to make a trip without having to unnecessarily get into your car, so. Really even brief CD.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any further questions, comments, and now is there a motion? So I'm going to parent. Motion to approve uh on emergency. On emergencies. A motion to approve of emergency by Mr. King. This is their second. Second, I'm just saying on emergency by Mrs. Wong. Any discussion on the motion? And we'll take two looks. The first is on suspension of rules.
This is Seth. Hi, this is Marshall. Hi, this is White. Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Uh, no main motion.
This is Seth. Hi, this is Marshall. Um this is White. Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi. Very good. Motion. Thank you. Next item is item N ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six. Amendment codified ordinance section ten sixty-four point oh five entitled storage behind rear building line. And declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. This is Wong. Mr. McConville would like to speak on.
I'm happy to speak. Uh this is another ordinance that's come out of the building housing committee. Um our director of housing and community development uh raised an issue that um. He gets numerous calls on a weekly basis. Um a man's complaining about trash cans being left out overnight. Um we actually have uh an ordinance currently on our books that um. Pivots garbage cans when they're located forward. But the rear foundation line, uh there should be centuries, but we have no enforcement mechanism in our ordinance. Um so this ordinance is designed to replace the ordinance that's on our books. And indicates that garbage cans cannot be um stored or kept for the rear foundation line. Of a home except after sundown, immediately preceding the day for represcription and twelve hours. Following represcription that city. Um it it sets out an enforcement um process to be followed. Um on a first instance of violation, uh a warning notice is provided to the housing and community development department. And if there is a subsequent violation within eighteen months of the first violation. Um that homeowner or resident will be cited again and fined in over seven to five hours.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Mrs. Wong.
Yeah, thank you. Just um one other thing to add is this is typical of cities. This is not overly proven in the law. This is what you see in terms of in the people on the twelve hours.
I I have raised some concerns uh also with regard to to. This particular one. And you know, I I think we all agree that that we don't want to see cans left out in death. I I'm absolutely concerned about the. Enforcement on a couple of different fronts. First being. The twelve hours. You know, we do not currently report when we service trash cans. So we will don't have a record that we can point to for whether twelve hours is actually. You know, and nor do we currently have a system where. Like in some communities where we issue cans, cans may have a QR code or a barcode that we scan at the time that we pick them up. So then we would have a record for when we have serviced the can, thus the clock would start. Uh you know, without something like that, I think we can find ourselves in a situation where we, if we're in court. Trying to argue that this fine should stand. That we may have difficulty proving time. That that twelve hours truly lapsed. And that sometimes occurs where also you have missed pickups. And by missed pickups, I mean sometimes uh we actually miss a pickup. Or sometimes uh somebody puts their trash out late and it's treated like a miss pickup. Uh and sometimes we don't get that missed pickup until the next day. So I'm concerned about situations where we may, you know, on the service side. Tell the resident, yeah, go ahead and put your trash out tomorrow. We'll come back and get it. And then it appears once the cans are empty that. They've been out for more than a day since their trash day, but in fact, we just serviced their can just hours ago. And then we have a housing inspector who goes ahead and issues a warning or or a fine. Uh I I think that would create a lot of hard feelings where there really was. You know, no particular mistake. Uh the other concern I have is I know the way that, you know, speaking with Mr. Engrath, the way we currently handle. Enforcement um uh among our inspectors on other housing issues. They don't go out. Every day on the streets to look for housing problems. Every day on the streets to look for housing problems. There's particular times of the week they tend to. So you having ordinance like this means that we're going to be fair in enforcement that. We're changing the way that we are sending out our housing inspectors. And reprioritizing their work so that they're going out. Presumably the day after trash picked up on a particular route day. So that every day's trash routes are treated the same way. Otherwise, we will have uneven enforcement, unfair enforcement. Certain parts of town based upon. A combination of when they put out some trash versus when our inspectors typically go out to new neighborhood streets. And I, I don't know that that was a, I, I don't believe that was contemplated. Uh, I do think there is something that needs to be done. Uh, I don't think this is quite ready to be passed. I think it should go back. Mrs. Wong.
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of things. One is we definitely know when people are twelve hours off. Because their trash is picked up on Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday. So if their trash is there um the next day. We know that they're, that they uh have not taken their garbage. The second thing is we don't have so many um. So many residents who actually put it on the curb and it's kind of what this is really focusing on. Um, and the third thing is that we specifically asked Mr. Engelbreit if, if his inspectors got time. To do additional work and reset us.
Thank you, Mrs. Sax.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, on the agenda, we have um Braden Carr. Um, regarding looking at. A plan for transitioning to used recycling. He has to do with. Craft of cracks. This aim and people can somehow um discuss. And we talked about the all of our trash collection. Um, as part of our plan, other than PC, maybe. Maybe more discussion in context of that. Maybe helpful. We don't know what's going to come out of the SCS um. If, if we.
Is that a motion to?
Um. Is there any other discussion first, you know, if somebody needs to tell us?
Well, yeah, I appreciate you not wanting. Which was great for discussion, so will we?
Mm-hmm.
Any other, Mr. King?
Yeah, I guess. So you're. You're considering table. The, the current agenda and discuss.
That happens.
I mean, I, I understand that. Um, we've had. Luckily, we've had several emails come through. And they come through a specific time of year um.
Oh, uh-huh.
That we see and I know that you have an out investigating.
Yes.
Some of these things personally. Um, and I, you know, I'm looking at this. We know that there's a problem. Is it? Citywide, no. Is it uh isolated? Yes, but we do have certain areas where they're repeating. And the residents, this is not. This, and this is not just begun this year. This has been unknown for many, for many years and certain areas of the city at certain times of the year. When there seems to be uh, there's a breakdown in that. Moving the trash that occurred or, or on one house that. You know, uh, I understand why you want to, you know, based on, I understand I have it's. For a amount, I understand that and I appreciate that. But I'm still, yeah, those are two separate issues we're talking about. Collection of recyclables as opposed to the uh matter in which the residents uh make uh the trash available.
Oh, this is nice.
Yeah, just another comment. Mr. Engelbreit also has the action to wait. Uh.
Is that specifically in New York?
That, that's not in New York. It's I, I. What I would say is, you know, first of all, on an enforcement standpoint and, and operational, and we've had some discussion about this if. Who, who, um. If the administration were enforcing ordinance, that, that enforcement would be to occur community by. Um, you know, it would not be acceptable to be um picking and choosing. Particular streets with areas or days of the week. Um, we would either need to be enforcing it for a period of time across the entire community or not. Um, I've seen these kinds of ordinances and operations on the community and they tend to be. Enforced with fits and starts. Um. You know, when the, the volume of calls uh increases and there's a perceived problem, then there's a period of enforcement that enforcement. Goes throughout the community and it seems like no one's complaining anymore. And so the inspectors spend their time doing other things. Um, and then, you know, eight or ten months lasts and then the calls start coming in. Um, I would note that any citation um. That's issued by the housing director of the department to a client. Um, violator who's not being fined will be subject to appeal, report his own appeals. There may be defenses. That, that the person who's facing a fine would have administrative appeal right because it's the decision of the housing.
Thank you for the verification. Uh, this is Sax.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. King, for reminding me about that. In which case, I look to what we just passed in uh agenda item L. Many of these properties we're talking about could be rentals. And embedded in that is some uh. Language that will be more reflective to the property owners and the people who are residing there. On how to manage their trail. Um, so. There, we're already moving in that direction. I just want to get that.
Thank you, Mrs. Sax. Any further comments? Now is there a motion?
I will make a motion on emergency.
We have a motion to approve on emergency by Mrs. Wise. Is there a second? I'll second. Second by Mr. King. Any discussion on the motion? Thomas, uh, will you take the role first on the suspension of the rules?
This is that I'm this Marshall, I'm this is why I'm Mr. King.
I.
Mr. King.
I. Then I'll make a motion.
This is that I'm this Marshall, I'm this is why I'm Mr. King.
I.
Mr. King.
I. Hey, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Condo, what would you like to say about items?
Yes, I can do that. Uh. Earlier this evening at the housing building committee meeting. Um. Also, maybe slightly, or I'm sorry, committee made a slight change to our origin fourteen ninety one A. First sentence of that is held unstruck and replaced with the following language. An owner or manager shall be required to obtain rental permit for each apartment building located in the city.
Annual.
An annual, okay. Let me repeat that down. An owner or manager shall be required to obtain an annual rental permit for each apartment building located in the city.
Um, do you have to wait? Time emergency?
We want this. Yeah, we want to wait for the check in.
May I ask a question?
Oh, yes, we can have stuff.
Yes, and then. If you'd like.
I haven't actually read the item.
Oh.
Why don't I do that first? So this is letter O and it's. It's a common way to change. So ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven dotting qualified ordinance chapter fourteen ninety-three. Title apartment building registration and inspection. And declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. And um. This is why I serve, who would like to speak on the. Those ordinance that's.
Mr. Condo.
Okay, my host.
Sure, this is an ordinance that wanted uh by the city with rights of um. Uh, ready to acquire an annual. Uh, registration permit for any apartment building and would, would include price of inspection. Um, for apartment buildings, including their common areas and the dwelling units located therein. Uh, code does not currently contain any provision that allows us to inspect individual loaned apartment buildings. Um, and over the last several years, Chief Foco in particular has raised concerns about. Um, building compliance, safety issues with respect to dwellers and apartment buildings. Um, this would um cause all the apartment buildings to be registered annually and subject to annual inspection. And creates a series of, of criteria that must be met in order for uh the annual permit to be issued.
Yeah, very good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Condo. Mrs. Wong.
Yeah, I'd like to, I want to give my name and time. Does Chief Foco want to um state any of the hardships that he's had in terms of. Apartment buildings and why he feels that this is important?
Chief, would you like to?
If not, that's fine.
Uh, sure, thank you. Um. So much of our, our motion efforts are focused in businesses. What we do allow our code and the city ordinance is uh paying for our. Right research to inspect. Um, that also includes three and a three and greater unit apartment buildings. But only in the common areas. So we won't have any jurisdiction as far as fire inspectors go in the one, two units. Or in the individual units of those buildings. So this will be a good partnership, collaboration, building department. About to help enforcement.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Sax.
Thank you. This is a step in the right direction in protecting renters. And making sure the properties are maintained in a very safe. Way from the federal prevention uh. Uh, perspective. And I just want to thank you for bringing our attention and for how you sponsored this. I, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. This is Wong.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I also just want to say that this is, is long overdue. Um, we do need to protect our renters and we don't just have um. Large apartment buildings. We actually have some units that have four or more um. Apartments um within buildings across the city. All there are, I think Councils, we, there's also. So um, this is really important um for our residents here. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I would also agree. This is something that I have supported for some time. And I know that. Uh, I have received more calls more recently about conditions in certain multi apartment. Without, you know, getting into specifics about particular tenants or particular buildings here tonight. Um, I know that outside of university heights, some of our neighboring, not so far away communities, uh, we, there are instances. Multi-unit buildings that are in grave dis- aren't fit for human occupancy. At all, they're not having. I don't think we have. Conditions akin to some of the apartments we've seen lately in the news. However, we also have a program that gets in there regularly to ensure that. Conditions are kept at an appropriate level for public safety, for the safety of the tenants themselves, for the safety of. Anybody else who either works for this invitee or a guest in the building together with people. So I support this wholeheartedly. We opt to be uh looking more closely at our multi-unit. Apartment buildings. We have regulated for a very long time. Do you want to need to zone homes? It's time, time that the virtual apartment buildings motion. Are, are, are similarly renewed for safety. I support this, uh, discussion. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move on emergency.
And the motion will prove on emergency by Mrs. Sax. I'll second the second by Mr. King. Any discussion on motion? I'll take two votes on the suspension of rules.
That I'm the Marshall, I'm why I'm. Mr. King.
I.
Mr. King.
I. Another main motion.
Say I'm this Marshall, I'm why I'm. Mr. King.
I.
Mr. King.
I. Very good motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next then is item key. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three alternate tax budget for twenty twenty-four. This is on staff reading, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, second reading of annual. Authorization for the budget for twenty twenty-four for tax purposes. Assuming this is approved this evening. I will file this in advance of the uh deadline with a kind of having a budget mission. That we've issued July fourteen. Uh, basically what this does is it's the G to the county to be the city. This is probably. We will get back a uh. Resolution of necessity sometime in late August. That traditionally goes on the first council meeting in September. That sets the actual tax rates for the coming year. Just as I mentioned on the first reading, there's no change to current tax rates. So no one's probably taxes will um be changed as a result of this. And. That was dramatic. Go ahead, Mr. King. No, it's, I just want to make sure everybody knows. Remain sane.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. King? If not, is there a motion?
So.
If uh.
Second reading.
The second reading. Yeah, that's a certain. Okay, motion by Mrs. Wong, so the second, second by Mr. King. Any discussion on motion?
I want to thank Mr. Andy one more time. Very good.
Thank you, Mrs. Sax. This is Thomas McCallum.
This is that I'm this Marshall, I'm this is why I'm. Mr. King.
I. I. Very good motion carries. Thank you, Mr. King. Next is item Q, motion group in work and see IT support and service from Starfish Computer for the period of July one twenty twenty-three through July thirty one twenty twenty-three. And I'm not going to say the two thousand dollars. We did a similar one of these at the last meeting for the month of June. It was our. Uh, sincere intention to. Work on the contract with uh Starfish Computer and come back to you with a contract proceeding. Patrick Rannahan, uh, unbeknownst to us, while we had that ambitious goal, was on vacation most of the time since the last meeting this evening. And candidly, Mr. Condo, I were rather busy as well, but. We found plenty to do in Mr. Rannahan's absence. We're not ready to have a contract here for the night. Uh, we do anticipate we would have a contact for, we would add whatever special meeting we ended up having in July. So, um, that said, uh, we are asking for one more month. Of uh support and service in the amount fifty-five hundred dollars. I don't ask for much. So, thank you, Mr. King. We have a motion by Mr. King. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Wong. Any discussion on motion? This is Thomas McCallum.
This is that I'm this Marshall, I'm this is why I'm. Mr. King.
I.
Mr. King.
I. Very good motion carries. Next is item R, emotional authorize the mayor to enter to agreement with SCS Engineers LLC consistent with. SCS is uh June. Oh, now have June sixteen twenty twenty-three. Uh, proposal revised from March twenty eighth twenty twenty-three to develop a plan associated with implementation of ordinance. Eight twenty-three dash zero five and amount not to see. Twenty-eight thousand five. I'll start. Uh, this is a, this is a proposal that, that I saw initially. Um, to assist the administration in implementing uh ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five. And um. Stacy Demarest did appear remotely. For the Service Utilities Committee to present on a. Proposal. Uh, there were numerous uh suggestions and additions that were made by committee. Which I believe are reflected here in the June sixteen letter. Addition, I know Mrs. Sax was interested. Which I believe are reflected here in the June sixteen letter. In addition, I know Mrs. Sax was interested in additional. Uh monitoring or observation rather of of trash routes um. Excuse me, well rubbish and recycling routes uh over the course of four days as opposed to one or two days and. Uh Ms. Demers went ahead and added that, which did adjust the price by basically eleven. So uh we're now at about twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars. I believe to reflect the base concerns, I might suggest. This is Sax. If there's anything left to raise at this point, I'm prepared to oppose.
Thank you so much, Mayor. First of all, thank you very much for pursuing this and for um acting on uh. Uh the fine tune and everything uh when you talked about what was discussed. At the Service and Utilities Committee meeting recently. Um it's also very encouraging with the great news of hiring the service director, Mr. Pennington. And these two things have converged around the same time. She did prove to be very uh useful. To moving the sports transition and finally transitioning away from collecting recycling and wood acts. To this uh this recycling collection. So. I'm very appreciative for the discussion at the Service and Utilities Committee meeting. The um recommendations, suggestions, and that they were incorporated in the interviews and. Full uh monitoring of the um uh four days of of collection, those collection. And also Ms. Demers uh um agreement to uh transition or whatever. Um uh having local interviews or just even. Collection of a desktop study, complete desktop study, study to being your own person. All for four days. So, thank you so much um for that. I think this is very, it'll be beneficial to us.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Sacks.
Yeah, thank you. The only um question that I have is somehow we do have a service director and there's one line in the. In the contract that says service director and mayor, I think we should probably remain. Right, they should be separate. Um because they included the service director and mayor as one title. It's because you didn't have, because you're out, you were out. I thought I decided to say.
It wasn't. So I.
Yeah, I thought there was a. We could just have them separated out because you would be interviewed and the service director would be interviewed. And obviously, he's new to this, so. He had one information, but it should be.
Yeah, I think. Make clear. I mean, obviously, when the. We did not tell the consultant that we have the announcement to make today. So, uh actually, we worked that.
The other thing in my head here.
Well, we, you know, this is, this is a um. Miss their close. Um but I I I think you could probably conditionally approve it. Is that all right? Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Cooney here.
Um I would ask council to consider tableing uh each and item. Reason being is that there were discussions between the service committee uh several times about the approach. Since they had a job for a number of years. Um maybe that's something that was back on as within the service director with his experience that he's bringing. Uh to provide an opportunity uh to new person uh with new experiences. To bring in the service committee recommendation. Uh option of these recyclables, but also review routes. Uh we have the knowledge in-house. Would it uh maybe more agree with the situation to review that challenge before going out. In the contract, the outside service. I'm not saying that he shouldn't move forward with this. I think of that's. Um table the item, have a chance to get the service director. Review the experiences and the potential uh that he he can provide the service in house. Maybe more effective and uh have a proactive service committee that have a comeback also for the regulation. Have to. Receive more uh with S C S, perhaps you can make adjustments.
Okay, uh Mrs. Sacks.
Just wanna clarify. So you're suggesting um that the new service director of the office plan. And a comprehensive plan that includes route review. Uh ideas for public transition, business recycling, some group back there. Is that, is that true?
Boy, I think, I think those are questions that we should ask first. Now, may, you know, through the discussion, the decision. We it may be determined that uh based on his knowledge or skill set uh. He would manage to ride that this, but what satisfactory and then we even have him to pursue a S C S. Uh if he's able to do that, then some, then obviously it's a um a budget item that we would not have the. You know, allocate money towards. I I think, but also think he gives a service director a chance to sort of put his. Um his fingerprints on how he sees what the service department would forward the budget. As opposed to using an outside service saying this is what you should do. So now it's kind of a new situation where sort of. Kind of not giving that freedom to make certain decisions and take ownership of it. And and again, this is not to not potentially pursue the remote best yet, or maybe simply table. If the service director with the key borders are, and you make that effective decision.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor. Um has S C S given any indication on when they would. Be ready to perform this.
Uh you know, no, we don't. I don't think we have a, I mean, the idea is that it would be soon, but we don't have a calendar at this point. You know, I I think, Mr. Cooney, uh you bring up an interesting point. I mean, now that we know that Mr. Pennington is going to start a week from yesterday. Maybe seeking his opinion with regard to this proposal before we approve it and hand to him and say, here it is. He may very well be fine with this. He may have another idea. And maybe there's something to be said for. Waiting another week and uh well, for him to get here and then. And then, and then there's also, there's bound to be one or two special meetings over the summer. You know, uh Mr. Pennington come in and weigh in on on the issue. There's something for others. Thank you. Thank you. Are you making a motion, Tim?
I'll make a motion. Can you take over then tomorrow? Uh with our party's mayor, actually, you know, S C S.
Okay. We have a motion table uh by by Mr. King. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. King. This is Thomas McCall. Well, oh, well, yeah, we can have discussion. Uh it's a second. I wasn't sure of the table. I'm there.
Question.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, please.
Um Mayor, so in your um discussions with this defending, can uh did you describe, did you discuss with the ordinance? And the um uh and get his take discussion about. Uh maybe have some insight into the scope of this for creating a plan. Well, he is an engineer and he cited his credentials, but I don't know if you also then spoke a little more about this.
Well, I did bring up that this was an issue and that we were seeking, you know, an outside consult. It may be that we would still seek an outside consult. Uh I did not ask him point blank. To opine on a proposal that I did not put in front of him when he was not at that time yet. Had an offer and so so um. I I would feel more comfortable not saying that yes, Mr. Pennington can or no, Mr. Pennington, you know, would not be the one. You know, I tend to think we would go with an outside consultant regardless. I think it's more a matter of. Whether there's something here he would say about the scope where he'd wanna provide input or if there was another consultant that. He believes we should be talking with. In addition to this.
So.
But I have not approached any of that.
Executive Director um that I I felt the department director knew and. And there is some merit to what Mr. Cooney is saying. Uh someone who is newly hired and motivated and. Uh has vision and experience may be able to connect the dots and see the forest and trees and, you know, whatever. Same as the book, um trees and. Um and so that that I appreciate this dialogue and perspective.
Any further comment before we take the roll on motion table? Okay, this is Thomas on motion table.
Sacks, hi, this is my phone. Hi, this is one. Hi, Mr. Cooney.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi. Hey, I'm Mr. Tim. Mr. Pennington gets here. I'm sure that we discuss it with him shortly. Thank you. Uh next item is item S, motion enter executive session for the purpose of discussing legal proceedings. For the non-real estate matters, we have nothing this evening that we intend to uh go into executive session over. I do imagine that um and a special legal in the summer, there will be an executive session on one-on-one that. Mrs. Wong.
Yeah, I'd like a um executive session on real estate matters.
On real estate.
Being real estate slash legal.
Yeah, I kinda wish I knew what you were referring to. Um, all right. Okay, I'll take that as a motion for executive session on real estate slash legal matters. And is there a second?
Okay.
Second one, second. Uh this is Thomas McCall.
Sacks, hi, this is my phone. Hi, Mr. Cooney.
Hi. Hi. Okay, we will have an executive session on the regular portion of the meeting. We now turn to reports of standing committees and taking action there on building houses. This is what.
Yes, Mayor, um in September, there will be ordinance discussing fourth term rentals that will be presented up.
Good, thank you. Uh committee outreach, Mr. King. No report, man. Thank you, Mr. King. Economics, God, Mr. Rogers, not here. Is there a report? Yeah, I said there's no report. Uh finances, Mrs. Wong.
Yes, there is a financing meeting on um June twenty seven.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Wong. For creation, Mr. King. Uh there is a memorial service for the story Lancaster, Rose Park Pool. Sunday, June one, it meant thirty AM. Uh for raised service to the city. Also, uh there is a little library which will be installed. Uh near the playground, the Rose Park Pool, uh is the honor of Brady's love for reading. And several residents have, and that we all know encourage those that new rate. Uh if you ever went to the pool, you saw him in his chair with his hat. And so.
Very long. Very good. Thank you, Mr. King. Uh safety, it's my. No, what? Thank you. Service utilities is that.
Looking forward, looking forward to meeting this.
We need a home, Mrs. Wong. Thank you. I'll read reports of special committees taking action there on. Saying I'm very unconditioned from this moment. See, and then we will break them to go into an executive session. Uh I'm not aware of there being any business that you can take following the executive session. You are welcome to stay around, of course, uh if you would like to see the adjournment and whatever. Motion might be made, though I'm not aware of one at this time. Uh we are reporting meetings, so. Where there'd be a motion, it would be reported there as well as part of this. If you're not here when we get out, thank you and have a nice summer. And uh if you are, you have yourself. Thank you.